You're watching a Fact TV presentation of the town of Swansea.
All right, we'll call the...
Any warning in progress?
Oh, thank you. We'll call the meeting October 18th in session.
Make the motion, we approve the regular meeting minutes on October 11th.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded to approve the regular meeting minutes of October 11th. Any additions, additions? Hearing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Make the motion, we approve the non-public meeting minutes one and two from October 11th.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded to approve the non-public meeting minutes one and two of October 11th. Any additions, additions? Hearing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Make the motion, we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded to approve the consent agenda.
Just have a quick question. Should we direct the town administrator to let the person know for item F that they're in Swansea and not King?
Okay.
Yeah.
Kind of interesting. And their very assumption, assumption. The ads are running on the radio, like, "We haven't approved it yet."
We haven't approved it.
Unless somebody's been going there for a haircut.
Wow.
Anyway.
Okay. We beat that to death.
That was for June Futter.
Uh-huh.
Remember June?
Yep. I sure do.
Yep.
Okay, so the motion been made and seconded, those in favor?
Aye.
Public input. Seeing none?
Why is somebody on the screen?
What's that?
Why is somebody on the screen?
I don't care. Are you trying to upset me? I didn't, no, I didn't care.
You're on a roll.
You don't want to roll with the grave. Okay, Chief, you're on.
Well, thank you very much for having this ceremony here. This ceremony, I'd like to introduce our newest officer, Kyle Thitis. Kyle comes to us from Pennsylvania. Kyle met a young lady from New Hampshire. He married her about six months ago. So now he lives in New Hampshire.
You live in New Hampshire.
Congratulations. Kyle is a veteran. He served with the United States Marine Corps as a sergeant.
Ooh, sounds like a good guy. Semper Fi.
You have some supporters here?
Yeah. They can't talk in the library, so they take this over.
Very good. Kyle did graduate from the police academy in Pennsylvania. He does have limited law enforcement experience, so we're very happy to have him on our team. First do the oath, then after the oath, Lauren will come up and do the painting. Can you memorize the oath? Ready to write in? We say it after me. I state your name.
Aye, Kyle Thitis.
Do solemn swear.
Do solemn swear.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
I will faithfully and partially.
Discharge and perform all duties.
Discharge and perform all duties.
Incumbent upon me as a full-time police officer.
Incumbent upon me as a full-time police officer.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
Agreeable to the rules and regulations.
Agreeable to the rules and regulations.
Of the Constitution and the laws of the state of New Hampshire.
The Constitution and the laws of the state of New Hampshire.
Very good, for a Marine. Lauren, can you come up and add? The badge is a symbol of authority, integrity, trust. It also serves as a symbol for commitment to the town of Swansea, protect and serve. Hopefully, we have no blood here. Thank you.
Calm down.
Questions, sir?
No questions.
Thank you, sir.
Where can I put a rash on?
Sorry, this is a teacher's meeting.
Okay, Strad Library, press needs.
Which one do you want first?
We have to retrieve your secretary. Can't blame the guy for trying. You're on.
All right. We're asking for less money than much. Is that okay?
That's great. What's wrong with this picture? What's wrong with it?
What's wrong with the picture? Primarily from, we thought last year we needed to buy some computer hardware and do some maintenance on the library. We don't expect to need that this year, so that's been a nice different thing.
Good.
Questions?
Questions, guys?
It's pretty straightforward to me.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Don't you guys shut up?
Right, yeah, the electricity, we thought we would need more, and didn't. Then there's no chance of one of them. One or nothing.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
No, we need to do that already.
Yes, unless they had a different file. We had them, so. Okay, Mount Caesar.
Yeah, hi.
Hi.
So we're asking for an increase of $141,122, and most of that is for staffing. Five percent raise, three percent coda, two percent for the staff salary, and six hours added on to our youth service librarians' hours. She is doing so great. She can't get all the work done in the libraries, taking work home, just doing unpaid work at home. So these six hours will help her to do her work and get paid for it. Plus, giving her an extra day on Monday, having her work on Monday will give her more opportunities to have more programming. Because I think, actually, I have a little report that she wrote up that I could actually give you all. It'll help you understand what she's doing. Honestly, that was the best thing we ever did, was adding her on for the... Getting her more hours.
Was it about the attendance numbers?
I think she does have, you know, there's for programming and summer reading and stuff.
I have attendance numbers of those people. Soreum have three. So it looks like... Thank you. Yeah, that doesn't happen next. This is the operating.
Our increases coming in also a little bit lower than last year's. Last year, we did give a bigger increase to current catch-up some of the staff, and we also had this cost for the utilities and everything last year. So this time, we're just going for two percent for the increased staffing, as far as getting an increase of two percent, plus the coda, that's five percent.
Were the programs clubs able to be established in the Swansea schools that were listed here?
She's working very much with Beyond the Bell.
With Beyond the Bell program.
She's totally coordinating with them.
Yeah.
So they've been receptive to this collaboration?
Oh, it's done a great part.
Great.
Actually, it's kind of volatile because their grant funding requires them to have an MOU with some other community organizations. And we're one of them, so.
So it's working well?
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, currently, it's running two, something at Mount Caesar and something at Storytime at Mount Caesar, and I think a book club that had got learned, but Beyond the Bell runs some seven-week camps, and I'm not sure what's going to happen with the next, next meeting. But that's what she did this first.
And how did you find attendance over this summer prior to the work that you did? Was it out from last year or the year before?
Yeah. Oh, my gosh, it's incredible.
And what?
She said she's raising her eyebrows because it was like, that's a big yes. Yeah. Yeah.
So it's working?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. It was a fantastic thing for us to be able to do that.
Sure.
Thank you.
Great.
We built it, and they came.
We built it, and they came, that's right.
You're not done yet.
Slum, the summer reading used to have about 50 children every summer, and most of those kids are still coming, but Beyond the Bell adds another 170 kids. We're also part of that summer reading, so.
We can't fit them in there. They have to come in groups.
Yeah.
Good problem they have.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, congratulations.
Thank you.
Yes.
And the capital improvement increase, that's the five thousand that was short on the forward project?
You want us to talk about capital improvement also?
Well, I see that.
Because we did it the other one.
It's on your list, though.
Yeah, but, oh, I would, did it? Did you?
You don't have to give us the whole spiel because he's going to get it on the committee.
He already got it.
Got it?
We are trying to figure out the numbers.
Okay.
No, it's it?
Yeah.
Good. Definite need.
Yeah, we can wait here.
You can wait.
We want to support these guys, too.
He said, "Definite need."
Oh. Sorry, I think you're in my ears.
Okay. You feel comfortable with the, with the numbers for utilities?
Yeah, I believe they use our heating contract they had in the past. So, yeah, we're looking at like a six percent.
You know, we're putting in a new heating system, so our costs will be different also. So when the construction is done, it's a new heat pump that's going to be in there. So those costs will go down, go down, hopefully.
And were you able to have a fruitful conversation with the developer, the contractor, with regard to bridging the completion date versus the two-town meeting for funding?
They seem to be right on schedule with the way everything's going.
But the funding gap?
With the funding gap? We did not talk to them about would they carry us over, but we're optimistic because they didn't send the first bill yet. So if they're kind of behind in their billing, we feel like it's going to kind of move over.
All right in place.
Because they said once a month, we'd get a bill, and we haven't got a bill yet, so.
Okay, the mayor will tell me at the end of the discussion.
About that, it's, I mean, we feel confident that they'll go with that.
Yeah, definitely fine.
Yeah.
Great.
So you guys, thank you very much.
Yes, really.
You know, this is really a win for the whole community, you know, truly, the library is.
Yep.
You can go.
Again, thank you. Nice work.
No, it's up. Thanks, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
God, you're going very long there, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, and I appreciate that. I think we're going to get to the heat.
The clock has stayed with us.
Run it quick, quickly, and I don't think there's any computers. Again, a four or four. Pete, you're up.
Well, thanks. Hi, folks. Pete, meeting the lane, recent full-time residents of Two Brown Lane in Swansea, New Hampshire. We moved in the first week in July. Everybody knows we had it on July 10th. So it was about 10 days after we moved in that the sky sort of jumped. And we're aware, you have what we requested, basically. We're aware of the letter you received here, and I have just a quick excerpt from a letter that our governor wrote to the president, and I just quoted from the record by the town of Swansea, Cheshire County. Due to impacts from the incident period, the town suffered severe damages to their town infrastructure as well as numerous residents reporting damages to their homes and washed-out driveways. Some roads are destroyed, getting residents stranded. Some of the roads were closed for a week or more. You could not get any repairs. The town utilized an estimated 5,000 cubic yards of gravel to make roads possible for the first responders. It goes on to say, the town had a budget, or spent $725,165 in validated damages. The highway budget was $1,733. So the town spent 68% of their annual appropriation utilizing the necessary repairs due to impacts from the severe storm. We bought that home back in the mid-'80s, and one of the things that became quickly apparent was the runoff from Talbot Hill way back then. And it was a town culvert on a old road that exited our property. We decided we'd try to do something with that runoff. And so we put it on catch basin and culvert and sent it down the east side of our property, go down the south side and exit to the lake. So it went around our property. It worked well until this recent, recent batch of storms that we had. In trying to mitigate and improve what we thought would be the overflow and run from Talbot Hill, Mike Edwards and I scratched it quite a bit, and we finally came up with a plan to improve our side of the drainage. The culvert under the road is the culvert, but what we think happened in the storm was the culvert became overwhelmed. The water then washed across East Shore Road and right down our driveway. So what we've done is we've installed a large bulkhead, an 18-inch pipe, just as the water exits the culvert underneath East Shore. We tried to straighten out the flow, to eliminate the restrictions, and then we actually installed a 18-inch culvert in the arid driveway in a straight line down to the lake. So we see no back, we see no restriction that would allow that culvert that the town owns underneath East Shore Road to fail, because that's what we think happened. It became overwhelmed, and the water ran down our driveway and walked us down. What we, what we were asking for is not necessarily an improvement of Brown Lane at all. We're asking for some help in improving how we catch the water that comes down Talbot Hill. And in doing so, we enlisted Mike to do all that work, and then you had his invoice, which we'd do to pay it. And we're wondering, hoping, that the town might find some way to help us out with that expense, seeing as how it did improve the water flow coming underneath the East Shore Road through the culvert. So that's our story.
Questions?
Has there been discussion with Joe Russo?
Yes.
With, and he was involved in?
Joe's been there since the start, and quite honestly, Joe's recommendation was basically what we did. And we, a lady, we had the folks from, I think it's Environmental Services come by and assess also. And they said that that would be, who said the bar very high, that that's exactly what they would recommend as well. That you can't really take that volume of water and try to turn it 90 degrees and direct it somewhere else. It's better to be a straight line, and that's what it is. It's a straight line from town's culvert up into East Shore Road directly under our driveway, directly down to the lake, and it's an open range trench. So we didn't want to put that any closer because that would be, that's not favorable. That water has to naturally run down the lake. So we just kind of sculpted it, but it's still an open range trench from the end of our culvert and through our driveway down the lake, but just a straight line. If we had that kind of storm again, and it's interesting that after we had our July 10th storm, there was another storm in Pittsburgh, the storm in Ludlow, there was a storm in Manhattan, all within 250 miles of us, all within 30 days of that storm. You know, so we decided to do it right away. We didn't want to wait and see it happen again. And so Mike and I, you know, I think this should be done, and let's do it, and then try to see the results. So what we've done is, in the bigger picture, is improve the ability for the water to flow under culvert and East Shore Road down. Hopefully, it won't wash down Brown Lane or any of the other driveways.
There any other FEMA funding that would be available to private citizens insofar as something like this?
I don't believe so. Initially, the state was directing people to go to 211, file a request, but I don't think any of the private...
I don't think any of it.
Property, property funds came through that I'm living.
Well, we have pretty clear guidance from our town's attorney, so it would just be whether there's a way, a slide suggesting to maneuver the process.
Yeah, and what I, I know your attorney addressed the improvement of the Class 6 road. Certainly, you can't do that. You can do a four or five, but Brown Lane is a private road. We're ready, I'm not asking for any help on Brown Lane. I'm asking for help on our improvement of the rain side of that culvert going under East Shore Road. And certainly, as the town goes forward, and Joe can certainly verify this, that the town cleans both sides of East Shore Road, the uphill side and the town's side. And they maintain, we don't do that. The town does, but what we've done, you said, we're not going to, that's not enough anymore based on the size of this line of storm. So we went ahead and installed a variator, a bulkhead, to get that water that's coming over Brown Lane or over East Shore if it happens again, as well as what comes through the culvert, and send that down to the lake quickly.
So from your time being there and your experience, what could we do to mitigate the runoff from Talbot Hill Road?
Joe says they've got to go through the town down. You know, they have to start working on Talbot Road. You've got to do swales there. Look, it's the velocity of the water that came down that really did all the damage. It wasn't, at the bottom, certainly, because it was, it picked up velocity as it came down East Shore Road, and then it overwhelmed the culvert underneath. It looked handled, our side handled, because it wasn't big enough, and that caused that huge runoff. And we, you know, we were fortunate, the ration was revised, if we could do some quick repair, we should, we could get out of the house, but we were stranded. So we don't think that's going to happen again. Yeah, I mean, we, we overbuilt, basically. And what I'm asking the town is some consideration, the fact that we're trying to do our hard due diligence and get, grab that and not make it a nuisance.
Well, I think all we can do is have Michael discuss it with town's attorney?
Yeah.
And see what Joe's involvement might be.
Yeah, I would get Joe involved, too. But we're not trying to do your engineering before you. What we're trying to do is look at what happened and say, what can we do to maybe ease that pain down the way it happens again? And a lot of it has to do with the water overwhelming the culvert on the East Shore Road, quite obviously, in the cross. And I mean, I can show you videos of the flood down front of our house. We're not asking for any, we're just really asking for the help on improving the flow of water so it doesn't go down Brown Lane and over down the river. If it comes across the, you know, overwhelms that small culvert. Because I know you can't change the size of the culvert without the neck of God.
All right. Well, we'll do our papers. I need to, to the town attorneys.
Sure. And I know it sets across.
Yeah, it's going to be difficult.
I know, I know, but I'd like to keep working, that's all. I can get good names and not bad.
Okay. Good. All right, just.
Thanks.
Thank you.
For the time being.
You're welcome to stay.
Welcome to stay. Well, what else is going on?
And you have the whole agenda, don't you?
Oh, that's right.
Most of the excitement.
All right, boys.
Meeting.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Complete Streets?
Yep, so this is a grant we applied to.
I don't care.
Systems.
Seriously.
So we're talking about the new business, Beverly, the Complete Streets implementation grant?
Okay.
So the last few years, we've been using that on the Swansea Center sidewalk extensions. We've gotten to the bridge on that one, and we're looking to use that to help for next year, kind of fill the gap on the North Winchester and California Street funding project and get the full Northern Borders Commission grant that we had applied for. So we're looking to apply for this grant, help fund some of those sidewalk improvements in that area. Well, if you want to speak before, during, or after, I know like one of us.
Sure, I think it's appropriate.
Sure, let's pick a time.
Right now?
Yep.
So the rail trail committee has been, had their eye on this for the last couple of years. We use it to purchase signal crossings at the Three Matthews Road and Ashley Lotre Crossings because of the dangerous intersections there. And we haven't applied because you've been using it, as Mike said, to complete the sidewalk up toward crossing. So I guess I'm here to lobby to do that for this round, if possible, and if not, the next round. And if not, the next round. Mike asked me to check with Penner Underwood to see if something like this would be appropriate. He replied and we said, yes, it would be. And he gave some study of how these signal reduce pedestrian accidents by 47%. So I'm just here to make that proposal, that we use this mass grant to purchase three signal crossings across the 3 Matthew Road crossings of the issue, Ashley Lot Trail. And if you're not familiar, the angle, the site angle's pretty short. The angle of the road to the trail is very shallow, so it's hard to see cars, you know, coming pretty fast, so we're just trying to prevent an accident.
Does this help out any with snowmobiles as far as radar activated?
They, well, this looks like it's activated, I believe, just by pushing a button.
Right.
Right? I don't know, I mean, to get ones that are activated by motion probably would be more expensive, but we could look into that if you guys want us to, you know, check that technology out.
Just point of order for Mr. Clausen, is that for Sawyer's Crossing Road?
No.
No?
The 3 Matthew Road, there's three places where the trail crosses, Matthew's Road.
Okay, thank you.
Those three. At Sawyer's Crossing and this trail, it's pretty much a 90-degree. The sight lines are pretty good, so we don't think that's nearly as risky.
Got it, thank you.
How much are each of the units?
You see here, so this letter's from Brett, who's an engineer at the City Keen. And you can see they said they've spent anywhere from 10 and 1/2 to 13 for each pair. So each crossing would cost that.
So we'd be looking at three crossings?
There are three that we feel need to be fixed. Whether you can do all three in the same year or not, you know, depending on the degree. We'd like to get all three and taking care of someone.
What is the grant, 15?
It's up to 120 this year. It varies depending on the year.
We don't know how many people submitted, because Henry just extended the application date. So that's making it not too many towns. Like last year, Swan was the only town that submitted. And actually got more than that's worth, and to complete the whole sidewalk. So the competitiveness went pretty small. I know typically the town doesn't submit two applications to the same grant, but I don't know how much this California Winchester Street project is, but, you know, that's another option.
Yeah, in light of that, basically, we've got as much or more than we've asked for, and we're gonna ask for the full amount. If they gave us less, take less. But the build project, the Swan lot's like a million, but that piece of roads and everything else.
So what's the sidewalk, you said finishing the sidewalk?
Well, be replacing the existing and then extending along California.
So it's the estimate to be that?
Depends how much of road-related stuff you include, but 300,000 to 400,000.
So what you want with the grant?
Yeah. But it's, you know, a lot of it's tied into the overall project. It wouldn't necessarily cost that much if you were doing it alone. So, I mean, I think at this point, you know, we need three letters support. The grant's due next Friday. I don't know that it's realistic that we'd be able to apply for this this year, but I do think, I told him I agree 100% that that should be a priority, so maybe through next year.
Okay, just because of timing, not enough time to get it in?
Yeah, I think we're gonna have enough to scramble the, get our, what we've been working on finished.
Okay.
Or it might be something where, like you said, just try to buy one a year or something, or see if these prices match what Joe has. But the Trails Bureau is okay with these, as far as?
We assume so because the City Keen's been doing it, you know, so. But I guess we have to check into that to verify. I thought Bruce got all the D and T as well. We need, Bruce did the research, almost, we need to do research.
I also think we need to be looking at a solution to complete the sidewalk now to the park for the launch, instead of people just dead-ending at the culvert bridge. That's gonna be more long-term, but I think we gotta be considering that. I had a few people this week that were struggling to cross the mouth of the bridge because they didn't know where to go. It was too narrow to walk through to get to where they wanted to go.
Right.
And I see the sidewalk used a lot. In fact, I didn't use it a lot, because we're working near a three-lot trail. So when I come over, because I'm on the east side. But even coming over here tonight, there were quite a few people, which is very good.
That's a good problem they have.
Yeah.
That's right. Need Mike to sweep the eye needles off of it, though. So getting quite a few eye needles.
Yes.
Get my leaf blower out there.
Good.
I'd be curious to know if we're pushing till next year, if you could look into the pricing for the motion detector once?
Oh, okay.
I see the one near my office that is very helpful, because it starts blinking maybe six or eight feet before the person actually gets there, which gives the driver plenty of room to slow down.
Right.
I've heard from Keen, they get, they can be frustrated with some of theirs that, you know, people just stand up and they don't press the button, so it doesn't, you've got to know to press the button.
Yep, yep. Well, we've seen that right on Main Street there, where I touched upon college. Students walk, but don't press the button. But we can also maybe find out, because they have some of the motion detector ones, too, like on Winchester Street, great, crossing the college. How do they work, or do they have any issues with those, too?
Would they be solar-powered? Yeah.
That's what I'd like to be, run all the wires and stuff.
Right.
Well, if my experience is anything, they do work.
Good.
I've yet to encounter one that didn't.
So where, where did you get it?
Winchester Street and Iowa Street.
Oh, okay.
I'm not walking.
Yeah.
But as a driver.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
They definitely work.
Yeah.
And it's helpful, because especially the students that might be thinking of something different. They're not even...
Paying attention.
They're not paying attention to pushing a button, they just...
All right, so we'll look into motion detection and we'll look to do this next year.
It's a great project.
Everybody okay with that?
Yeah, whenever the grant comes around. You know, if they, if they have money left over, they'll make a supplemental or something.
Yeah.
Sooner rather than later.
Well, I'll find out, because I'm on the Mass Series.
So they'll be the first to know. Well, I appreciate you bringing it up and getting to say this about it, you brought a valuable task.
Okay, great. All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Take care.
Yeah, take care.
We come home, yes.
We gotta get that motion to authorize the letter of support and town to share your platform.
Can I make that motion? I don't see it, but I'll make it.
Page four?
Second page of that one. Top of the page. Oh, okay. Yeah, I'll make the motion in 6A. Second?
Okay, second. I'm doing a description here and that.
Hi.
So the Wood Mall gas range, so we currently have a very nice commercial range of the video purchase when the rehabilitation was done. It's nice for people who know what they're doing with it, I'll say, and are experienced with that sort of system, but it does have some drawbacks. One, it does sit a lot of the time, they're standing pilots, so we're kind of constantly burning propane and we have an open flame in the building. And it's just had a few maintenance issues recently. There was a wetting, I think last weekend, the weekend before, that was coming in planning to use it, and there was an issue with it, difficulty getting a part. We were able to get the part late on Friday and get it installed, but we almost had a wetting and a renter that was not gonna be able to use the oven. The pilots go out, really need someone experienced with lighting them to do it, not just anyone turn on the gas and hit it. So Joe had sent me that email that was included, just suggesting maybe, maybe something that's a little simpler for the overall, that means people aren't cooking three meals a weekend in there, I don't think, I don't think it's getting that much use. It's definitely nice to have a range to offer. I think we might be able to find something that's a little more user-friendly.
I talked to a gas guy that was involved in this one, actually. He said the self-igniting commercial ranges are out there, but they're wicked expensive. If you want to get rid of the pilots. Electric, I don't know. It's... I haven't seen an electric range for commercial, you know. Obviously, they have induction. You don't want to get that, because somebody could smash the top. Are you interested to see what he finds?
Something to think about, I think it's not, it's no, there's no urgency, don't have to do anything right away, but it's just...
Is this a used fixture? I think it was.
Yeah.
I think it came out of somewhere else. I remember Mike saying that, that he had a good source. This was, I assumed that came from him, but it was... Well, there was one that was donated, and it didn't work out.
Yeah, I think this is the second.
And then this one filled the bill, so. I just haven't seen, is there a dual fuel? With propane on top and electric in the oven? That's a commercial, but a commercial grade? Maybe. Yeah, they might have a convection oven. Gas on top, convection oven. Propane, good idea. He doesn't have... Are you putting that in your new house? Sorry. Here.
He's got a micro infection.
I think, yeah, that's, yeah. I don't think he has enough to do. I'm sure he'd do a lot of research on this. A train or Robert, good.
Train, a train, sounds good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Does provide heat and weather.
No, we're...
I guess it's getting better, it works pretty. That's good, it's fantastic, yeah.
Yo.
Hey, it's me.
Yeah, we're right in the middle of the day now.
Okay, can I ask you one question?
What?
What is the network power?
Don't say this on video. I don't know.
Excellent.
Okay, I'll let you know when I get home.
Bye.
See you. Bye.
Care, I don't care. That's word one, two, three.
I don't care.
No, you said, "I don't know."
All right, yeah. We're on.
Right back on track. One thing that I included in correspondence was a letter from NHGES on some additional funding in addition to the mass grant that we've talked about for the California North Winchester Street project. Main reason I'm mentioning this, A, because we got more grant money, so that's good, but it's a little more complicated, kind of like the Weber L1, where we had to have an amount that was going to be borrowed, and then some of it is gonna be what they call principal forgiveness. So we're gonna have to have a warrant article, which I know was annoying, but for the 805, so it's gonna look like we're borrowing that amount, but some of it's gonna be principal forgiveness. So again, partly just letting you know, because I think overall it's good news, but also letting you know it's just a little bit kind of different to get your mind around. I had to have a call with them, have them help me understand kind of how this works. So just to have you keep an eye out for that, we're gonna have a warrant article for that. And then our friends at Underwood were able to secure some additional funding to help bridge that gap.
Good job.
Yeah.
All right. And we do have a non-public?
Yeah, just one quick one.
Anything else?
I don't have anything else.
Anything from you, sir? Right now? Make the most while you're going to the non-public under A.
Second?
Thanks for coming, Jim.
All right.
Have a good day.
Here is it.